So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:32. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on November 17, 2020, and a regular meeting held on November 24, 2020.
I make a motion that we accept them, approve the minutes from the special meeting, November 17, 2020, and the regular meeting, November 24, 2020.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have our esteemed CRAD representatives, Scott Martinson and Sherri Carlson here. And if they want to give us an update of what's happening, we'd certainly appreciate it.
Sure Angus, hello everybody. Oh, it's tough out there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. You know, you click on any news and you know we're in a tough spot right now, pretty much across the United States and the world for that matter. But today Connecticut was about 8.6% positivity, which is pretty high with broad-based testing. The last time Connecticut saw that rate was mid-March, and that was primarily when testing was done for symptomatic individuals. So having that high of a rate with broad-based testing is certainly a concern. We're starting to see, you know, beginning of holiday travel potentially in gatherings. A lot of the cases are in the 40- to 50-year-old range. That's about the age group you'd expect for this. More to come on that. But as that web of Thanksgiving spread collides with future holiday spread, we're going to be in a very tough spot probably in about four weeks. Let's see what else. You know, the governor's got some decisions to make. You can see the hospitals are getting very full. I'm not sure what's going to happen. I don't think the, having the vaccine on the horizon is going to be quite enough to stop decisions that he's probably going to have to make as our hospitals and increase and the number of deaths certainly increase. We had three untimely deaths in our district last week. They were not part of nursing homes. Sherri can briefly touch about those individuals. And our case rates through Deep River are certainly picking up. It's pretty consistent with the state. We're not seeing large outbreaks, just once again, large families that have contracted the virus. Not much else to say Angus, we've got a lot of messaging to do. We've got to keep people as vigilant as possible for the next, you know, two, three months certainly, because there's not going to be really any way of stopping this next wave.
Right, right.
Sherri, what do you got?
Um, I concur that the cases that I'm calling are going through families pretty much all the way through, whether kids are giving it to adults or vice versa. We're still seeing good mitigations in schools and they're able to continue to stay open, which is great. There is a testing delay with the amount, or delay reporting of testing. So we are getting some testing five to six days after where that's not optimum. We like to get as soon as possible. A lot of our intel that we're communicating is coming from parents of kids and from people that are calling from, you know, places of employment that are telling me that they have and looking for guidance. So we're able to get to some cases much earlier. I just got an email from the state DPH that they were dumping in reports every three times a day, and now they're going to be dumping every couple hours to try to keep up to get us more timely data for positive testing. And we're working to get ready to stand up, to be able to vaccinate our critical workforce by learning how to make all that happen through the VAMS program. And the people that were, did pass away were in an older generation, not from a nursing home, but they had been probably inflicted four weeks before they passed from COVID is what, they were, you know, got COVID and then they didn't pass away for another four weeks.
Is the delay, it's not the delay in somebody getting tested getting their results, it's getting the results to you is the delay, correct?
It's both. I have people calling me that they haven't got their results and because I've called them about, you know, a positive family member, they're, they're calling me now looking for their tests. And, you know, I have some, but it takes, because of the volume of people that are testing and people are testing five and six times just because they can, it just clogs up a lot of stuff. And so for me to go through the line list of even negatives that I get, it is very time-consuming. So that's not really my, can't be really my focus. My focus has to be in getting out to the positive and stopping the spreading, getting the guidance out for that. And the last thing I wanted to say, sorry Scott, was just about the confusion with all the CDC messaging that came out about changing the dates and days of, for contact of a case. Those were reviewed by our Epi department and the guidance for us went to draft to the commissioner's office yesterday, and we should be getting those soon. But the highest-risk people will not be changing that. That will be on a case-by-case basis.
Anything on vaccination Sherri? We're kind of in a holding pattern as you can read on the news, but any brief update just to give them a little sense of where they're headed?
Yeah, we have, we have all been, we as, we are a provider. I've set up our COVID clinic and we will be obtaining all the, we have names, we need emails of all of our critical workforce, our vaccinating nurses, our EMS, police and fire to put into VAMS. That's the way they get personally invited as a critical workforce to be able to come to get the vaccine. We will be ordering it directly through the federal government, but that will be routed through Connecticut DPH. And they will, even though whatever we ask for does not mean what we will get, they will have, we will get what our allotment is based on the even distribution throughout the United States and our state.
Yeah, we don't anticipate the critical workforce that we would be doing. That would probably be, seems to be pushed to about February-ish now, you know, by the time they take care of the nursing home patients, the hospital staff. There's also discussion about frontline emergency support, people that rush in, like you guys may, into hospitals with patients, how they may be aligned with the first phase, with the doctors and such within those hospitals. That wouldn't include all the police, fire and EMS, but certainly certain segments of them. I also believe they allowed today, the pharmacists are geared enough to do this, so our role's kind of, you know, questionable in how much, how many, but I know CVS's are hiring a lot of people to vaccinate. I think they're going to be a major player. I still think we'll be responsible for at least police, fire, EMS. We're not 100% sure about school staff yet because they're such a large population and over age 65. And in addition to that phase with the over 65, they did add a certain individuals who may be immunocompromised. So that might be difficult to put into the fold to figure out who that may be. Is it just, you know, obese children? Is it diabetics? Is it what have you? So more to come on that. But a lot on the horizon, we just think it's going to be a little more delayed than I may have thought a week ago.
And CVS and Omni are all having the assisted livings and SNFs sign up. So they look like they're going to be the major providers for those in congregate settings.
Okay, just a quick question. When we sent out that blast to all of our first responders, was an email included in that, or do you need these sent to you separately?
For to sign up, or are you saying?
I don't know, Sherri was just saying that you need emails for all of the first responders.
Oh no, we've been getting those. That was that registration link that I sent.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
And I haven't checked town numbers yet, but last I checked, we had 1,600 people out of, we kind of figured about what, 2,300 Sherri? We had critical workforce and we're also doing Westbrook, Essex and Killingworth. So the rate of preregistrants is a lot higher than I anticipated, which was good. So I don't see as much apprehension with our first responders at least signing up. So we already have most of that data. But we could keep pushing that out because there may be certain people that have missed it. But what I'll do is within a week, I'll maybe give you like a roster by town and by department. And if you can see if there's any flaws in that, hey, we kind of missed Deep River Ambulance, or hey, you know, we'll do something.
And then I would be taking that data and uploading it into VAMS as it's appropriate per whatever tier that we're being told to do so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
The only thing, just generally, you hear on the news that Connecticut in the first wave is supposed to get 40,000. Is that, is that a, is that a good number to start when, you know, all the critical workers and the nursing homes? I mean, it almost seems like a small number to me, but I don't know to you professionals how that number looks, you know?
It is a small number. It's smaller than most people thought, but I think a lot of people anticipated that, you know, those were lofty projections and it's coming. I'll say it slowly, you know, it will be here, but it is going to take a little bit of a while. The biggest, you know, it's not really the 1A group and, you know, the total light at the end of the tunnel where everyone can just walk into anywhere and get it. It's those five months in between that are going to be really tough figuring things out. So yeah, much more to come.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Jane?
Jane Samuels. I kind of think that the people that work in the grocery stores are sort of essential workers. Where are they on the list?
That is a spectacular question and I do not know. We have not, have you heard anything Sherri yet about regular workers yet?
The only thing that Dr. Matt Carter said today on a conference call was when people were asking what was going to be next, the ACIP, which is the immunization program that helps the CDC make these vaccine decisions, they have only decided on the first two groups. And after that, Dr. Carter said, this will be an ethical, it will be a study in ethics.
Yeah. But that's a super point and, you know, we're going to have to keep those critical workforces going like it was in the spring if it comes down to a shutdown, which, which may be, you know, what's coming next for Connecticut. Maybe brief, but certainly possible.
Thank you once again for taking the time to come over here.
Very much.
You're quite welcome.
Good information.
We still have new vaccine too, if anybody's still missing that of any type. Just call the office and we'll make an appointment. I have high dose as well.
The high dose is 65, right Sherri?
Yes, you know. I didn't know, speaking of yourself Jim, I didn't want to.
Well, I'm getting close, but I'm not there yet. And I was just wondering, you know, you're here 65, but you don't know what.
65 and older, I have the high dose.
Gotcha, okay.
Thanks everyone.
Good night, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll see you guys tomorrow, I think. Audience of citizens is next on the agenda. If you have any questions, comments or thoughts? Okay, hearing none. Let's go to item number five is appointments. We have two today, the Board of Fire Commissioners, Dave M. Baritas has been on the commission, the Fire Commissioners before. He left there a while ago as a result of having his work demands. Right now we just have a vacancy created by Scott.
Yeah, I can't think of it either.
I can't believe it. He's resigned as a result of his work schedule and COVID.
It's bound him.
Yes, thank you, yeah, good job. Sorry about that Scott. So we have a vacancy on that. David has agreed to serve on that commission and actually attended his first meeting last night while not a commissioner yet, just to get himself warmed up. Next on, next we also have the Board of Assessment Appeals, we've had a vacancy there for a little bit. We have Jacqueline Calamari has offered to serve on that. She served on a number of different boards and commissions before her work demanded too much time and she has recently retired and is looking to get back involved.
You need two different motions for those Angus?
That'd be good, yes please.
All right, I'll make a motion for David M. Baritas, Board of Fire Commission, term to expire 12/1/2024.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion for Jacqueline G. Calamari for the Board of Assessment Appeals, term to expire 11/2/2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, I'm going to share the screen now with the information, let's see, for the town meeting that is going to follow this immediately. While that's up there, this has just got information how to attend the meeting, you know, the passcode and the meeting ID. It's a separate meeting, so it's got a different ID. We're going to have things set up a little bit differently just for everyone's information. There's going to be a little bit of time before we start the meeting, but please come there as soon as you can because we're going to ask you to, to go into a breakout room where you can privately identify yourself with the registrars. So when we take the vote at the meeting, we can, we can, everyone, we can ensure that everyone is a town resident, citizen, just like we often do at these, at these votes. We need to verify the identification. We're following the protocol laid out by executive orders and such guidance. Best way to do this is with, you need to have your video set on, so this telephone is not going to work for you. But what we'll do is when we go there individually, we'll be sent into the room with the registrars. From there, we'll come out of, we'll go through the process of verifying your identification and we'll come back into the meeting room. Once everyone has gone through there, we will commence the meeting, go through the, go through the town meeting and have the vote at the end. The vote at the end will be by roll call. The registrars will call your name to confirm that you have registered, you're verified, and then we'll vote yea or nay, yes or no. And we'll go through that process. That's really the best way that we can determine. And as I said, we've worked with the town attorney and with the state to do this. I think this meeting is going to be a good warm-up for meetings in the future. Hopefully we don't have to have too many and hopefully we'll be able to have in-person meetings, but this is how this is going to happen. I hope that everyone has gotten that ID, my meeting ID and stop sharing now so I can see who I'm speaking with. Make sure everyone's in. And then we'll go from that. And if that's, that's it for me, I'm going to, if we don't have anything else for business, then I'm going to ask in a German.
Excuse me Angus?
Yep?
I need the last name for Alan and Carol F.
I don't know.
Alan is Parody.
Alan Parody.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Could I say one thing real quick? This is Karina Garrity.
Sure.
I just wanted.
Hi Karina.
Hi, how are you?
Great, good to see you.
You too. I wanted to let you all know that I am back at it, reporting for the towns of Essex, Chester and Deep River in a new forum. It's called the EssexChesterDeepRiverPatch.com. So you'll see me again at meetings and I'm sure I'll be talking to you guys about various things, but I just wanted to introduce that to you all. I hope you all sign up for the newsletter and like it on Facebook. It's only news from these three towns and I hope it's very successful.
Great, I hope so too. It's good to see you back at it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. If there's nothing else, then we'll, we'll take a motion to adjourn and get over to the town meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Jimmy's muted.
Yeah, sorry, a second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you everybody, see you in a few minutes.
Yep.
7/17, we're going to call this meeting to order. And the first order of business is to take nominations for the town meeting moderator.
I nominate Angus McDonald be a moderator of the town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that's, that's.
With this part.
That'd be a little too much, sorry about that. Okay, the next, next, next order of business is to appoint a clerk of the meeting and I'm going to, I'm going to appoint our town clerk, Amy Winchell. Amy?
Okay, I'm reading a legal notice, Town of Deep River, Special Town Meeting, Tuesday, December 8, 2020, immediately following the Board of Selectmen's meeting at the Richard H. Smith Town Hall. There is, this is a Zoom meeting due to COVID restrictions. The purpose of this meeting is to approve actions of the Board of Selectmen's regular meetings of October 13, 2020 and November 10, 2020. Appointments to the Community Health Committee, Nancy Howard and Dawn Norton, both with terms to expire 12/1/2022. Also, Michael H. Tomlinson and Michael A. Spanner, both with terms to expire 12/1/2022. Appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission, Alan Parody, a regular position, term to expire 12/1/2023. Appointments to zoning Board of Appeals, Jerome Ackerman and William Harris, both with terms to expire of 12/1/2023, and Robert Santinello as an alternate with a term to expire as 12/1/2022. Item two on this agenda is to approve actions of the Board of Finance's regular meeting of November 24, 2020, transfer of $18,136.37 from general fund to salary contingency and accrued benefits line. This notice was dated at Deep River, Connecticut on Monday, November 23.
Thank you Amy. Can we have a motion to adopt the call of the meeting as the call for this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What the next thing to do, actually I'm going to ask a question of Amy, just so maybe we can expedite this a little bit. We have to approve the actions, these appointments. I'm hopeful that unless there's any major discussion, that we can appoint these as one vote. It is one item on the line, so I think we can. And I'd like to, if you, unless you disagree or unless anyone has any comments on that, I'd like to, to ask for a motion to adopt item number one, the appointments to the Community Health Committee, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals as one vote.
Is that okay with Amy?
It's fine with me, it works for the people.
That's, that's the question. Does anyone, does anyone in attendance have any comments about that, any thoughts on that?
How many people?
Hearing none, then that's what I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt or to approve item one on the call of the meeting.
Angus, John Baldwin?
Yep, go ahead John.
I had a question about how many people that actually registered to vote today? I mean, do we have a huge room full or we have like six people? How many do we have?
Registrars can tell us that.
15?
We have 16.
16?
Because two of us are in one box.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve item number one as read by Amy.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion on any of this?
So we're just approving the people that are nominated for those positions, correct?
Yes. Yeah.
So now we have to go to a roll call, other after discussion?
Well, hearing, I'm hearing no, no discussion. I'm going to ask for a vote and I'm going to defer to the registrars to go through the roll.
Can we go back to the gallery? Can you switch back to gallery view?
Oh yeah, sorry about that. I'm going to stop sharing, hang on a second. There we go.
So we're doing the two candidates, Nancy Howard and Dawn Norton for the Community Health Committee.
What we're doing, the motion is for all of item one, which is Nancy Howard, Dawn Norton, Michael Tomlinson and Michael Spanner for the Community Health Committee, Alan Parody for the Planning and Zoning Commission, Jerome Ackerman, William Harris and Robert Santinello for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay.
And there wasn't this objection, so it looks like we're doing it bulk, so.
Yes.
So I'm going to ask a person and they're going to say yea or nay, or yes or no?
Yep.
You can also do a hand signal.
Okay, so we're going to go through the list. Is everyone ready?
Yep.
Angus McDonald, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yeah, just put it in the last box next to his name.
Okay, Lori Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alan Paradise, how do you vote?
Yes.
Amy Winchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
John T. Baldwin, how do you vote? George Eckernroth, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol Flame, how do you vote?
Yes.
Gary W. Clark, how do you vote?
Yes.
James A. Olson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Joyce Paradise, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dwayne Gates, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly Olson, how do you vote? Lauren Stewart, how do you vote?
Yes.
James Samuels, how do you vote?
You're muted, but you can hold up your thumb. All right, I got you, thank you.
Good job.
Elizabeth Greagan, me, yes. Dale Winchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
All yeses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item is to approve item number two on the call of the meeting. That is to approve the action of the Board of Finance to transfer $18,136.37 from the general fund. Just looking for that, so I can share it with you, sorry. To the salary contingency and accrued benefits line. This is a result of two longtime employees. One retiring, one moving to another job outside of the town employment. And their, their food benefits were not, were not accounted for when we prepared the budget. We didn't know that we were going to be retiring before the end of the year. Bud Eckenroth, you're here, our chairman of the Board of Finance. If you'd like to give an explanation of that, board is yours to do so.
I think you've done a grand job of setting it up, but two people have left the town employment and they have accrued vacation and sick leave, which we did not anticipate in the budget. So we have, the Board of Finance has approved that we would take dollars out of the general fund, put it into a line item which we call, what do we call it? Salary contingency, which is where we, if we were to be aware that people were departing, this is where we would have placed those dollars up. To pay these people, we need the authority to move the funds from the general fund to that salary line.
Great, thank you. I got a little bit out of order there. We do need a motion and a second before we can have the conversation, but we've got a great explanation already.
I make a motion to approve the actions of the Board of Finance's regular meeting of November 24th, 2020, as read by the amount of 18, 136.37 as Amy read.
Second it.
Any questions? Any further conversation?
This is Jack.
Go ahead, Jack.
Is that, is that number for the end of this year, 2020? Or is, are they getting paid for something till next year? Or when are they leaving? What's their last day?
They, they, they have both already left. This is, and this will, this will carry us through, I would, I would imagine this will carry us through the end of this year, the end of this fiscal year.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Gary, I see your hand up.
Yeah, can we ask who these people are by chance?
Sure, it's Jonathan and Gina.
Aye.
Regina, who's Regina?
Gina Sernetsky, who was in the office as.
Oh Gina, Gina J. Okay, thank you. I thought started with a R.
Oh, sorry. My enunciation is probably not what it should be. Anyone else? Any other questions or any other conversation regarding this?
Is, is this going to continue next year? Do they get more retirement?
No, no. Well, Jonathan has, Jonathan has a pension. But this is, this is something that they, our contract allows for people to accrue time through vacation and sick days up to a certain amount. Actually, not through vacation, I'm sorry, but through other, other.
Sick time.
Sick time and this is the amount that these two have accrued over the, over their careers here. Both of them worked here for over 20 years. So this is a one-time transfer and they'll be paid either in bulk or over the course of between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If I hear nothing else, we're going to just move on to a vote and I'll go give the floor back to the registrars. I hear nothing. Go ahead, Lauren.
Okay, this vote is to approve the funds just discussed. Angus McDonald, yes or no?
Yes.
Lori Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Alan Paradise, how do you vote?
Yes.
Amy Winchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
John T. Baldwin, how do you vote?
You're muted. Can you do a thumb?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that.
Okay, thanks.
George Eckenroth, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol Flame, how do you vote?
I think she dropped off.
I don't see her anywhere.
Gary Clark, how do you vote?
Yes.
James A. Olson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Joyce Paradise, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dwayne Gates, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly Olson, how do you vote?
All right, we got it. We got it. Thank you.
Lawrence P. Stewart, how do you vote?
Yes.
James Samuels, how do you vote?
Yes.
Elizabeth Griegen, how do you vote? Yes. Dwayne, Dale Winchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. That is the, that's, that is the, all of the items on the agenda. So having no other business, we can have a motion to adjourn. But before we get, before we do that, I'd like to thank you all for your patience and for your participation tonight. This was a good run-through. If we have to have a larger, larger meeting before we get through this.
Absolutely, this was good.
Through this pandemic. I really do appreciate.
Great job, Jim.
Everyone's opportunity. Jim and, and Jim's friend Anne, who helped me last night get this set up. I really very much, the town very much appreciates your efforts.
This was awesome. Very good.
Absolutely. Well, you know, the parade in the key, we'll, we'll worry about that later.
When we can have a parade, we'll have a little float for you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion where you adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful, be safe.